Thank you. Board of Commissioners' Public Meeting for Tuesday, March 15, 2022. The time is now 7:08. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Law--
You may report.
Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975, notice that this meeting was published in the December 9, 2021, issues of the Nellie Sun Herald News and the Star Ledger. In an effort to prevent further spread of the COVID-19 pandemic, the public meetings for the remainder of the year 2022 have been changed to Zoom webinar or teleconference meetings until further notice. Notice that this meeting revision was published in the January 27, 2022, issue of the Star Ledger, Nellie Sun Herald News, and tab into nelly.net. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Nellie Tab Hall bulletin board and a copy is on file at the Municipal Burke's office. The public will be able to listen to the Board of Commissioners meeting and participate during the designated electronic portion of the meeting by utilizing access through a URL link or dial-in address provided on the township website. Commissioner Kelly is on his way. Deputy Mayor--
Here.
Commissioner--
Here.
Commissioner Scarpelli--
Here.
Mayor Tucci is absent, excused.
I guess we can read minutes this evening. I'm trying to--
Yes, Deputy Mayor, we have minutes, regular meeting minutes for January 18, 2022, February 1, 2022, February 15, 2022, and executive session minutes for February 1, 2022, Sessions 1 and 2, February 15, 2022, and March 1, 2022.
Move minutes, sir.
Commissioner-- Deputy Mayor Evans--
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco--
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli--
Aye.
And that's it for minutes.
Executive Sessions.
I also read those into the record, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Communications, post-phones.
Thank you. Commissioner Scarpelli's office has an event application for the 101st Annual Memorial Day Parade, scheduled for Monday, May 30, 2022, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., starting at the Nellie Park Oval, and the Nellie Providing Survivors has an event application for their annual walk for Sunday, October 2, 2022, from 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., beginning in front of John H. Walker Middle School.
Move with--
Deputy Mayor Evans--
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco--
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli--
Aye.
Thank you, and that's it for communications.
We have the force this evening, Commissioner Petracco.
Yes, I have my public safety report. I have my reports, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, and I have a conference report the month of the year, too. I have the bill list.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. We have the bill list for March 15, 2022. Public Affairs, $142,861.50. Revenue and Finance, $8,026,841.58. Public Safety, $121,565.70. Public Works, $133,597.70. Parks and Public Property, $163,787.87. Water Utility, $312,877.72. Payroll as of March 4, 2022, regular payroll total, $851,711.85. Overtime payroll, $36,992.52. Total payroll, $888,704.37. For grant total, $10,09,149.45.
Move the bills, sir.
Commissioner Kelly--
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans--
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco--
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli--
Aye.
And that's it for the bill list.
Do you have any notes or public comment on agenda?
Yes, ma'am. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone and provide the name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to three minutes. All remarks to the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the Mayor. They may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the Board. There's no one.
Close of a common period. Board of Commissioners' announcements. Commissioner Scarpelli?
I have-- As we all know, it's, or maybe you don't know, 20th History Month. Right now, there is a movement panel going on at the high school. There'll be another panel next week on Tuesday as well, at 7:00 p.m., also at the high school in the morning. I encourage everyone, and this is not just for women, it's for everyone, to come and interact, network. It's a great opportunity for us, for ourselves, for our community, and better Nellie overall. Thank you.
And I don't have any comments this evening either. Let's move on to ordinance and regulations. Commissioner--
Yes, thank you. I have ordinance number 348, ordinance two man and ordinance code by the Code of Attention and Knowledge chapter two, title, "Beadles and Traffic," article 7, section 29A, entitled in the actual court. Thereon, I move this one to be passed to second reading, and I advertise that all the seven government departments require by law that further consideration is set or out of final passage by order of the legislature. At the second reading, I read beyond April 20--
April 19.
April 19. Is it April 19? It is, obviously. I understand you may correct me, April 19, excuse me. Second.
Commissioner Kelly--
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco--
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli--
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans--
Aye.
Order number 348, not going to amend that one, title of the Code of Attention and Knowledge chapter two, title, "Beadles and Traffic," article 6, turn-- Section 22, entitled, "Prohibited turns at intersections." I move that this one to be passed to the second reading, and I advertise that all the seven government departments require by law that further consideration is set or out of final passage by order of the legislature. At the second reading, I believe it's April 19, 2022.
Thank you. I--
Aye.
Bishop Petracco--
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli--
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans--
Aye.
Order number 3490, ordinance for the amendment and order of the Code of Attention and Knowledge, Chapter 228, entitled "Beards and Traffic," particularly Article 6, entitled "Designed in Terms of Only at Intersections." I move that this one to be passed to the second reading, and I advertise that all the seven government departments require by law that further consideration is set or out of final passage by Board of Commissioners, being all that is second reading. Second.
Commissioner Kelly--
Aye.
Bishop Petracco--
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli--
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans--
Aye.
We don't have any public hearings tonight, so let's move into the resolutions. Commissioner--
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. The first one I have this evening is a resolution for recognized day of remembrance, whereas Holocaust was the state-sponsored systemic persecution and annihilation of European Jewry by Nazi Germany and its collaborators between 1933 and 1945. Six million were murdered, Roma Gypsies, people with disabilities, and souls were also targeted for destruction of our destinations for racial, ethnic, or national reasons. Millions more, including homosexuals, to hold what is a Soviet prison for political systems, also suffered previous oppression and death in the Nazi period. Whereas the digital Holocaust was an opportunity to reflect on the moral responsibilities of individual societies and governments. Whereas the reason people of Nellie should always remember the terrible events of the Holocaust remain visually against hatred, persecution, and tyranny, and should actively rededicate ourselves to the principles of individual freedom and just society. Whereas the day of remembrance had been set aside for the people of Nellie to remember the victims of the Holocaust as well as to reflect that belief and respect of all peoples. And therefore, be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, attached to the county of Essex, state of Jersey, that Thursday, April 28, 2022, should be recognized as the Day of Remembrance. Or Yom HaShova, the internationally recognized day, marks the anniversary of the Warsaw Ghetto uprising, on its survivors as well as rescuers and liberators. Be further resolved that we as Nellie citizens should work on immunity from eight, whenever and where it occurs. So move-- Second.
Commissioner Kelly--
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco--
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli--
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans--
Aye.
The second one I have for this evening is a resolution for organ donation. Whereas 106,146 people in the U.S. are waiting for life-saving organ transplant. Nearly 4,000 are in terms of residents. Despite the added challenges, NJ sharing organ is announcing an all-time high of organ donors in single year, with giving organ donations from 2022 to 2022, an 8% increase over the previous year. Whereas every nine minutes, another person is added to wait list, while 17 people die every day waiting for a transplant. Whereas the organ donor-- whereas one organ donor has the ability to save up to eight lives, one tissue donor can store adult over 75 people, and all ages, when considered potential organ and tissue donors. Whereas April 22, 2022, has been designated as Blue and Green Day. Bush time residents are encouraged to wear blue and green to celebrate those who have been touched by the gift of life. Now therefore, be resolved by Board of Commissioners, attached to the county of Essex, state of New Jersey, recognized April as National Donate Life 2022, be a donor. For National Donate Life 2022, donate life. America was inspired by the vital role that these play in sustaining life. These are small but powerful life force, working together with dedication, collaboration, and strong sense of community. Be a further resolve that the Nellie Health Department encourages all citizens to consider becoming an organ or end tissue donor by placing organ donor destination on a driver's license and state identification card, registering online at www.donatelife nj.org, sharing this decision with their family. I move this resolution.
Commissioner Kelly--
Sorry.
Commissioner Kelly--
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco--
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli--
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans--
Aye. Commissioner Petracco-- Do you want to read somebody else? I'm going to try that one.
Thank you. Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, attached to Nellie County, Essex, New Jersey, that reports from Bishop Zoharis, 28, 49, 50 transfers, 21, 21, 21, 21, 21, 21, 21, 21, 21, 21, 21, 21, 21, 21, 21, 21, 21, 21, 21, 21, 21, 21, 21, 21, 21, 21, 21, 21, 21, 21, 21, other expenses, and what he totally operate salary wage, 15,000, 15,000, 15,000, 15,000,
A little bit to do with this, so just to let everybody know, this new sort agreement replaces what we had a triparting treaty with the Hockenbrose and Cindy Clifford. And they have been working on this for an extended period of time to find a way to be free. After the negotiation of at least two years. So I would reiterate the motion. We'll proceed with this. You were bringing. Whereas PB Nutcliffe Master is the owner prior to the property located in South Carolina, which is a portion of the I three campus. Whereas the property was foreplayled out of the agreement, which was part of the agreement, causing the nothing from the maintenance and certain source on the line, which is a portion maintenance caused to be part of this where Hockenbrose agreement is not assigned to suit by PB Nutcliffe. Whereas PB is the owner of the San Antonio Drive, standing from a certain point within the city, Clifford continually resold the direction crossing this to boundary through the property until its fourth point termination at a point of connection at the PB solar line to the Nutcliffe solar. Whereas Clifford is younger or Santa Maria, standing from a certain point, or if the majority say however, they continue to resell the direction crossing this boundary and that the property continued to its point of foundation at the point of connection of the Hudson solar line to the PB solar. Whereas take consideration for another acceptance of the waste quarter closed from Clifford to PB into Nutcliffe solar line, Clifford and PB had agreed to pay to Nutcliffe, which will live in by not being paid as a waste quarter. Through the Nutcliffe solar line, based on the line, the waste quarter closed, discharged from the solar line with the PB being a portion of the P. Whereas PB, Clifford and Nutcliffe have reduced their agreement to writing in the form of sewer connection sewer agreement attached. And two, have they been resolved by the Board of Commissioners? Not the, having thus a signature with the mayor attached to the property, it will not be authorized to direct to execute sealed, literally attached sewer connection sewer until the agreement, no connection. Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans.
Aye.
Whereas the town of Kelly entered to contract a wording that environmental consultants, steel box, steel line, upper Montclair, private services, various director parts. The property is recommended upon change order for the contract. Change order number six, power investigation services for two twenty eight, Chestnut Street, amount of four thousand dollars, or Spencer Bell, cap orders, three, four, five, five A, and have been certified by the chief financial officer of successive application taxes resolution. Now they have been resolved by the Board of Commissioners attached to Nutcliffe County, the state of Jersey. The change order number five, the amount of four thousand B, is hereby approved. Who was the second?
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco.
Aye.
Whereas whereas the town of Kelly entered to contract a wording that environmental consultants, steel box, steel upper Montclair, private services, various director parts of the properties, recommended upon change order for the contract. Change order number four, private block site investigation services. First Spencer Bell, cap orders for three, four, five, five A, and have been certified by the chief financial officer of successive application taxes resolution. Now they have been resolved by the Board of Commissioners attached to Nutcliffe County, the state of Jersey. The change order number four, the amount of two hundred dollars B, is hereby approved. Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans.
Aye.
Whereas the property's terminal, the elevator, the number of libraries and need modernization, which corporate's barrier of accessibility. Whereas the parts of public properties terminal, plus the renovation seat on February twenty third, twenty twenty two, and the only bed exceeds the amount of project. Whereas NJ, N J, twenty eight, all eleven dash thirteen point two, permits the rejection of all bids of the self-servant standing. Now they have been resolved by the Board of Commissioners attached to Nutcliffe County, the state of Jersey. That all events will be barrier free, gallery free, from the number of five, eight, two, four, nine, times received over thirty five seconds. And with reservation. Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans.
Aye.
That's all I have, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I have, I have a few reservations of my own and then the remainder of, I'll cover the remainder. Mayor Tucci's reservations. Whereas NJ, let's say NJ, NJ State, state statute of code, code one four dash three, zero, provides for more veterans who honorably discharge back to service in time or in any branch of the armed service in the United States, veterans shall be declared by the United States Veterans Administration. One hundred percent permanently disabled in connection with wartime service, a full tax exemption under their governing and a block of which is situated. Whereas the following taxpayer has filed an application for allowance of the full exemption with proper supporting documentation, thus making the taxpayer eligible. Now therefore being resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Towne of Kelly, County of Essex, state of Jersey, that Daniel M. Professor Nelly be granted a full exemption from property, payment of property taxes from January one, twenty twenty two, and will subsequent years thereafter, property identified as block nine hundred lot one, also known as
second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Thank you for your service.
Commissioner Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans.
Aye. My next reservation is covers the same thing, but for a different individual, which I'm reading in part, now therefore being resolved by the Board of Commissioners, the Towne of Kelly, County of Essex, state of Jersey, that James Patrick O'Connell be granted a full exemption from paying the property taxes from February seventh, two thousand twenty two, and all subsequent years thereafter, property identified as block nine hundred lot one, also known as four thirteen Hartford, directly from the resolution of the Treasury, C F I authorized free fund, one thousand eight hundred and ninety seven dollars and fifty three cents for twenty twenty two property taxes. So.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Thank you for your service.
Commissioner Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans.
Aye. Whereas on or about December fifteenth, twenty twenty one, Scott Madlinger, plaintiff submitted to the Towne of Nutley a request for access to government records pursuant to the Open Public Records Act, NJ SA forty seven, colon, one A, dash, one, and S, otherwise known as T O R, and seeking access to certain documents. Whereas the township denied plaintiffs' open request on various grounds, including the SS County Prosecutor's Office had jurisdiction over the underlying investigation. Two, the requested records are exempt from public disclosure, disclosure under Oprah's criminal investigatory, investigatory degree of records exemption. And three, the request was made anonymously. Four, the requested records contain hidden information. Five, the township is not in possession or control of any CD or one or CD or two documents or documents. Whereas the plaintiff filed an order to show cause in verifi- verified currently on February twenty third, February twenty two, February twenty two, Scott Madlinger versus the Township of Nutley and Lady Pettis, bearing document number E S X dash L dash one, two, one, seven, dash, two, two, seeking production of documents requested in an open request as well as counsel case. Whereas the township makes no admissions as to any liability under overall or otherwise, and the parties desire to settle their issues in dispute, in the dispute, the interest of, in the interest of avoiding the uncertainty of litigation resolving the matter expeditionally. Now therefore being resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of County of Essex, state of New Jersey, contract where special development council has followed that Mayor, Judge, and Clerk are hereby authorized and directed to execute seal or deliver settlement agreement with the plaintiff in a form acceptable to the township attorney. The township pays settlement to the plaintiff in an amount not to exceed one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars for attorney's fees incurred in the investigation.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor.
Aye. Whereas the current board will receive a zoning certificate fee in the amount of one hundred and fifty dollars from Ms. Karen Cassielo. The property located at Fort Spur Place is determined by the government department that the applicant does not require a zoning certificate. Whereas funds are available from account nine, one, three, oh, one, one, or now there for being resolved. By the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, state of New Jersey, that the township treasurer is authorized to pay for the zoning certificate fee in the amount of one hundred and fifty dollars to Ms. Karen Cassielo.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans.
Aye. Whereas the government department has received a safety and stabilization bond in the amount of eight thousand five hundred and seventy eight dollars and thirty one cents for the PB Nutcliffe, the property located at one eleven IDH Way. Whereas the planning board has reviewed and determined that the one, the eight thousand five hundred and seventy eight dollars and thirty one cents is due to, due back to PB Nutcliffe. Therefore, being resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of County of Essex and the Treasury and he is, she is hereby authorized to refund the performance warranty bond for the storage facility at one eleven IDH Way in the amount of eight thousand five hundred and seventy eight dollars and thirty one cents from account two fifteen, nine, twelve, nine, twenty two.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans.
Aye. Whereas the fully addressed resolution, two hundred and seventy dash twenty, the Township of Nutley has entered a professional service contract with Inglisina Webstore, Mrs. Collins and Taylor, and his council of the township regarding wine specialty, special development council. And whereas change order number two is needed, the amount of one hundred and two thousand to continue these services for the remainder of twenty twenty one. Whereas funds are available in account nine, one, zero, one, two, two, oh, five, fifty two thousand dollars, and in account one, oh, one, two, two, six, two, oh, five, the amount of fifty thousand dollars. Has been certified by the chief financial officer, said certification being attested to this resolution. Now therefore being resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of County of Essex, state of New Jersey, the change order two, C F I authorized with the amount of one hundred and two thousand dollars paid for the result. A copy of this resolution is now being placed on file with the clerk of the Township of Nutley and a notice of importance with local public contracts about New Jersey in the form of text, here it shall be published in a healthy sense.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans.
Aye. He resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, state of New Jersey, the Treasury and she is hereby authorized to refund overpayments of tax charges in the amount of three thousand five hundred and ninety eight dollars and ninety five cents for block seven one, oh, one, lot eleven, seven.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Bishop Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans.
Aye. He resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, state of New Jersey, that the court's provision of RS forty eight, colon, four, dash, fifty nine, following transfers of the twenty twenty one recreation reserves being the same, are authorized and approved for the, it's for the accounts that are listed in the resolution, the total amount of one hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans.
Aye. I just now read the county of Mayor Tucci's resolutions. Whereas the force department has determined that the elevator at Nutley, the libraries are being modernization, which incorporates barrier free accessibility. Whereas specifications are available in the purchasing department of the Township of One Kennedy Drive. Whereas the municipal clerk is being, is hereby authorized to begin to advertise for sealed bids, now therefore being resolved, sealed bids are to be received on Wednesday, April sixth, twenty twenty two, Commission Chambers, Township Hall, eleven A, prevailing time. Be further resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, state of Jersey, hereby authorized municipal clerk to advertise for sealed bids for the modernization of an elevator.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans.
Aye. Whereas, rather than applications I've never received, were from the Yanticoil School PTO for on-premise, for cash route and on-premise merchandise for Tuesday, May seventeenth, twenty twenty two. Whereas the applications have been reviewed, approved by the municipal clerk, police department, and now they're being resolved. By the Board of Commissioners of the Township of County of Essex, state of New Jersey, that the app mentioned licenses are approved and municipal clerk is authorized to issue said licenses.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans.
Aye. Whereas the Department of Parks and Public Property has determined that there's a need for new fencing and scoreboard at recreation fields. Whereas specifications are available in purchasing department, One Kennedy Drive, the Township of Nutley. Now therefore be resolved by, be resolved that bids are to be received on Wednesday, April sixth, in the Commission Chambers Town Hall, by eleven A, M, prevailing time, and in which time they will be publicly open. Red, be further resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of County of Essex, state of New Jersey. Municipal clerk, B H, is hereby authorized to advertise for sealed bids, new fencing and scoreboard for recreation fields.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans.
Aye. The next two resolutions are read on the out of the Board of Commissioners. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley identified certain properties in the township nominated as the former Hockenbrose site as a condemnation area in need of redevelopment under local redevelopment and housing. Whereas the Board of Commissioners directs ecology, NJ, ecology, New Jersey LLC, to prepare redevelopment, redevelopment plan in front of Nutley Phase Two A redevelopment plan, which contains a detailed subdivision and development program and design criteria approximately fourteen acre, fourteen acre portion of redevelopment area and the existing structures there are located within portions of block two hundred, oh, one, block three hundred lots, one and twenty. I mean, by maintaining existing zoning in the remainder of the large redevelopment area, with the understanding of the phase two A redevelopment plan will be amended and/or additionally developed, as will be adopted in future to encourage use in the redevelopment area complementary to, consistent with phase two A redevelopment. Whereas on August seventh, two thousand eighteen, the Board adopted phase two A redevelopment pursuant to ordinance thirty three ninety two. Whereas on August twentieth, the Board of Commissioners adopted resolution one eighty six eighteen, conditionally designated repeating Nutcliffe as a redeverberation of the redevelopment area covered in phase two A redevelopment conditioned upon the redeverberer and entering into a redevelopment agreement with the township in ninety days of the adoption of such resolution. Whereas on March fifth, two thousand nineteen, the redeverberer attached it, executed a redevelopment agreement. Whereas on February seventeenth, twenty twenty two, the redeverberer applied for certificates of completion for block two, two, oh, one, lot, one point oh one, block two, oh, one, lot, one point oh two, and submitted evidence, excuse me, and lot one point oh three, and submitted evidence in the form of written certificates of the redevelopment's engineering firm in addition to construction for phases one, two, and four hundred of phase two redevelopment. Where the redeverberer has agreed to execute a sewer connection and services agreement between the redeverberer and the township in the city of Clifford, which is a condition of the temporary certificate of occupancy for two hundred metro gold. Now therefore being resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of the County of Essex, state of New Jersey, the Mayor and the Towne of Clerk being hereby authorized to execute a test respectively, certificates of completion compliance for block two, oh, one, lot, one point oh one, block, block two, oh, one, lot, one point oh two, and block two, oh, one, lot, one point oh three of the phase two A redevelopment project. Be further resolved, the certificates of completion compliance shall be held in escrow by the township redevelopment council until the sewer agreement is fully executed by all parties thereto, at which time the certificates of completion shall be released from escrow until it is to be repelled.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans.
The, my next, my next resolution is also going to be after the Board of Commissioners. This resolution authorized the appointment of DMR architects as a professional consulting professional planner to the township of Nutley for the redevelopment project within the town. I am going to read the resolution in part, now therefore being resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley as follows, Board of Commissioners and courts with local public contract hereby authorize us to boost the appointment of DMR architects to township professional planner and consulting connection with such specialized professional planning services required or desirable for the investigation and redevelopment of property identified as block thirty one hundred lots twenty one, twenty three, twenty four, twenty five, twenty six, twenty seven, twenty eight, twenty nine, thirty, thirty one, thirty two, thirty three, thirty four, thirty five, thirty six, thirty seven, thirty eight, thirty nine, forty, forty one, forty two, and forty three on the official tax bill of the Township of Nutley, known as the Chickalini redevelopment area in an amount not to exceed twenty five thousand dollars pursuant to a non-fair redevelopment process in accordance with provisions of NJ SA nineteen, colon, forty four, eight, twenty dot five. Two, the chief financial officer of the township has executed or will execute a certificate of funds for the appointment and that such funds are available or set appointment. Then three, the business and the disclosure certifications, business and the exposure of campaign contributions and determination of value shall be placed on file with this resolution. Or a copy of this resolution or something there shall be published within ten days of its adoption. Otherwise, as reported by the Board, this resolution shall take effect immediately, but no sooner than as permitted by the law. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans.
Aye. The last resolution is also going to be after the Board of Commissioners. Whereas ECI Inc. proposes to construct a pedestrian bridge connecting the second floors of the office building located at two hundred Metro Goldard and the adjacent parking lot at block two, oh, one, lot, one point oh one, both of which are subject to the phase two A redevelopment plan. Whereas proposed bridge shall span roughly fifty feet and would require modifications to both buildings to accommodate. Whereas under the plan, the applicant is required to submit plans to the Board of Commissioners for review and authorizations perceived before the planning board prior, before the planning board prior to submitting an application to the township planning board. And whereas the applicant application was submitted to the township's special planner, Topology, which has undertaken a review of the same and submitted a memorandum of its findings. Whereas according to its report dated March fourteenth, twenty twenty two, the township's special planner, Topology, has found that proposed bridge would be permitted if permitted accessory use under the plan as is a structure which is clearly incidental and subordinate and on the same lots as the permitted principal uses, which is affixed the office located at lot one, oh, one, point oh two, and the garage located at lot one, oh, one. Whereas the township planner has offered certain planning comments regarding the application, which the Board of Commissioners finds to be reasonable and consistent with its findings. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, state of New Jersey, hereby determines that the application, ECI Inc., to construct a pedestrian bridge connecting the second floors of the office building located two hundred Metro Goldard and the adjacent parking lot is consistent with the planning, subject to the planning comments of Topology, Topology, so that they proceed to the township planning board.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco. Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans.
Aye. We now will then move to the further.
Thank you, Deputy. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should state their name and address for the record. And as further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to five minutes. All remarks of the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the mayor. The mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the Board. Yes.
Rory Moore, one eleven St. Gavino, Nutley, New Jersey. Deputy Mayor Evans. The past few meetings, I've asked Mr. or Mayor Tucci for the asbestos abatement from the Chickalini building. I wrote to the state under an open request and they have never received one. Recently, I received some documents that indicated there was at least nine events of asbestos, but there was no asbestos abatement documents. Am I going to be able to get those documents by federal law?
Mr. Moore, those questions are most appropriately directed to Mayor Tucci as it is a public building which falls under his commission. So I would, I would ask that we hold that until Mayor Tucci returns with the next meeting.
I have a suggestion. I'm going to file mediation on it and I will get mediation on it. The reason is, according to the documents that you did send me, there was sufficient amount of asbestos when we adjourned last summer. I believe it was Commissioner Scarpelli held his outside flea markets, which exposed everybody to asbestos. That seems to be a concern that nobody really cared about. And that is a serious concern. I'm not sitting here trying to bust your horns about it. However, I don't think anybody took it seriously.
You know, Rory, again, I can't answer for Mayor Tucci. But one thing I would suggest is demolition is, it happened under the guidance of the construction official of the township. And in the normal course, to follow the procedure, to understand the procedure that was followed versus taken documented, I would suggest it would be worthwhile to have a conversation with him. And, uh, Mr. Moore, would you be willing to coordinate a phone call?
Yeah, absolutely, we could coordinate a phone call with myself and a construction official. This is a complicated issue, we understand, you know, the concern and we're happy to get any information here.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Have a good night, Mr. Moore. Else?
There's no one else.
We need to move into executive session tonight.
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor. She's done some commissioner announcements, but Mayor Tucci wanted me to, I forget, Board of Commissioners, thank the community for all the donations to bring people to all states. Hope it gets to where it goes.
That's great to hear, that's great to hear. It's all the photos, it's just very generous, it's quite, I'm just, um, any other comments from the Commissioners? Just on a final note, Jonathan, which is what I know what we have. Control once it's on the best. Then we're going to move into executive session.
Thank you. Second.
Second.
Whereas section eight of the Open Public Meeting Act, chapter two thirty one, article one thousand nine hundred and seventy five, permits the exclusion of the public meeting in certain circumstances. And whereas the public body is of the opinion that such circumstances exist, and whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, the County of Essex, and state of New Jersey desires to proceed to close executive session, and therefore be resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley have been to close executive session to discuss contract negotiations.
Council.
Yes.
Be a further result that the time when such discussions may be disclosed to the public shall be when and such disclosures may be made adversely affecting the Township of Nutley pending in or anticipated legal personnel contractual matters and other matters within the exceptions provided for by statute. This resolution shall take effect immediately. Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans.
Aye. Also, since there's no action to be taken during this session, I wanted to come out to post a meeting on the need for us to close the public purse committee.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans.
Aye.
And the time is now seven fifty five.